Okay. Welcome, everybody, to this meeting of the Stockbridge Planning Board, which I'm calling to order now. The first item of business is, as usual, approval of the minutes of the last meeting on February 1st. May I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Actually, I might be out of order with that because I wasn't here.
Okay, can somebody else?
I will, okay. I'll second it still.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Did read them.
So, any comments about the minutes? Hearing none. Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
I, Kate.
What did she say?
Somebody said.
Oh, she's saying aye.
She's saying aye.
Say aye. Bill?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Wayne, you're going to ask me?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So, now we get to the sign permit for the Once Upon a Table restaurant. I recognize, I can just see Heather's name on the Zoom screen. Who is the other person sitting there with the purple cap?
Okay, Heather?
Yeah, that's Avi. She's the owner of the restaurant. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, that's.
Hi, Avi. Welcome to you both.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything about your sign application?
Just that, I just wanted to update the hang in sign with the new font that we picked. And so, I learned that I needed to ask for approval, so I'm asking for approval. We're using the same frame that's there, we're just updating the words on the sign.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with your business.
Thanks so much.
Any questions from the board on the nature or size or positioning of the hanging sign and the wall signs?
Yeah, I think, I think we should review it against the bylaw. Does...
Sure.
How about if I, I'll share out my screen so we can review it with the bylaw?
That's fine.
Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay. So, this is a request in the Business District, and it falls under double I. It's my understanding there are multiple establishments, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, one comment I would have is that, for this particular request, because it involves a hanging sign, the numbers that you've given us are just a little bit, they're over what's allowed by a quarter of a foot. So, on your application, you've got, your math is a little bit off too, so I would check that. On the application, you've got four and a, a little over a quarter feet. And for a hanging sign, we have a limit of four square feet. So, I would think it would be really easy to scale it back, that amount, based on what I've seen of the sign.
Right, and I noticed earlier today, I think I put 22 inches by 28 inches on that, it's really 22 inches by 24 inches.
Well, that's why the math doesn't work.
So, I would, you know, I would fix math to make sure that it's four square feet. And then, under that section, you'll see that there's some requirements in terms of going before, you know, getting approval from the Board of Selectmen because it's a private way, I guess, that area in the muse, is that right?
Yes.
No, you would, you would also need to just, you'll see under the bylaw here that I've pulled up, the triple I's, number one, two, three, and four. So, just make sure you, you get approval from the select board as well. And then, I would correct the math on the, on the application. And, but basically, other than that, it looks fine.
I'm actually coming up with 3.66 square feet on that hanging sign. It's supposed to be, it's 22 inches by 24, not 28. I just caught that.
Six, six. She's right.
So, what does that translate into in square feet?
3.66.
3.66, that's fine, but that's, that's good. And then, I would just correct it on the actual application permit.
Mm-hmm.
I heard you guys saying how hilarious we small towns are. This is, this is it.
I know, right? I was like, wow, this is amazing. I didn't even know, I was like, wow, this is so cool.
Well, we, we take, we take the character of the town seriously.
I appreciate that, that's awesome. Because I was like, I didn't even know, I went in to do something, and Mr. Risa told me about it, and I was like, oh, I guess I have to get a permit. I didn't know. So, I'm grateful and learning so much about everything, you know, so.
So, I think we're, subject to the select board agreeing to the hanging sign, the two issues remaining are the two wall signs.
Those are... Sorry, Bill.
And I, I think, do we have to combine those, those two?
They're, they're fine, because they're under, so, because if you look at the bylaw and you look at double I, you'll see that any non-residential principal use consisting of multiple establishment, establishments, one sign not to exceed 16 square feet, an area for each separate establishment, except as otherwise provided in section 6.8.8.8A triple I. And then, if you go down to that triple I, that's where they can have, in lieu of one of those wall signs, you have the hanging sign, as long as it's not more than four square feet. And then, they have to meet those other requirements down below, you know, with the Board of Selectmen, police, fire, and highway, and so on, if that's applicable.
If the, if the select board decides that. Wayne?
Are we controlled by the sign size? Because if we're just changing the wording and the signs are staying exactly the same, I don't think we have say over what the signs say. We have say over what the sign's size is, or where they're located.
Right.
So, aren't these...
Only the size, only the size, not what it says, not the design.
Why is it necessary to come before us if the wording is simply changed? The signs are, the signs are what they are.
It's not grandfathered in.
I'm not saying it is. I'm saying that the only thing that's changing is the wording, which is not necessarily what we concern ourselves with. We concern ourselves with the size, not what they say.
Size and placement, right.
And they meet that already.
Right.
But it's a new sign.
How do you figure?
Well, because it's changed.
Only the wording.
Right, but, you know, I mean, it's just like, it's, it's like when we do a, a form A, you know what I mean? It's, it's a little confusing. It's just, it's almost a formality in this case, but it's, we still have to do it.
Yeah.
Because it just, it keeps us in front of changes, you know? I hear what you're saying, but I mean, it's a new sign.
And in effect, what we're saying is, I think, I think what we're coming to is, we're going to approve this.
Yeah.
And, and then, it's up to the applicant to go before the select board. But we don't, they presented us with a, an application that meets the sign bylaw requirements.
Okay.
And so, we can just, to approve it, because it, there is no, no problem, no issue with either size, placement, or...
But, but they are correct in that they had to come before us in, because the wording has changed?
Well, it's a new owner.
It's a new, it's just, it's a new application, it's a new sign. And yes, you could say that the wording changed, but it's just that it's a new...
A new owner?
It's a new owner, it's a new sign. Sign's the same, but it's still new.
And I think, you may be right. Maybe because there are no changes, the only issue is really taking this to the select board.
Has the shape of the sign, is it exactly the same as what was there?
If I may, if I may say something, the, the three signs that we're talking about, we're literally reusing the existing panels, which are all in good repair. And the hanging sign, for example, is getting a light restoration, full repaint, and then just relettering. They literally, all three are literally the same signed panels. We're going to take them down, bring them back to the shop, take care of them, and bring them back.
Bill, I have a question.
Yes, Nancy.
Is it really considered a private way? Isn't it just an alleyway?
Yeah, what is the definition of a private way?
Well, I think it's, it's, that area is owned by the owner.
By the owner, the developer of that, that whole complex.
Yeah, the whole piece is the muse.
Yeah.
So, it is a private way.
And I think there is a new owner.
There is.
Yeah.
There is.
Didn't you go to lunch with him, Bill?
Yes, although I don't think the deal had been consummated at that point. So, it doesn't matter whether it's a private way, because the, the bylaw, as I read, it says, if the sign projects over a public, public or private way. So, either one, it has to go to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Yeah, this is in the business sign.
So, so what does that mean? And do I have to get it approved from you and then go to the Board of Selectmen? Or can I get it approved from you and Heather can take them down and do the work? How does it work?
I would go to the Board of Selectmen first, just to be...
Yeah, I think, I think, I assume we're going to approve this, subject to taking a vote. But your next step should probably be to talk with the Secretary of the Planning Board, of the Select Board, for what you need to do, what kind of forms you may need to submit, and to schedule a session with the Select Board at some future meeting.
Okay.
It's...
You know, Wayne, to your question, can you hear me, Wayne?
Yes.
Yeah, I actually think it's a good question. I think it'd be worth asking Town Council about that.
It just did.
What did, what did they say?
I looked on at what I was listening, and she said that as long as, as long as the applicant is using the same physical signage, and simply changing the lettering, no, or whatever the design of the sign is...
Yeah.
There's no new permits needed. And she said I could quote her.
Could you forward...
I mean, what about if it, Patrick?
I don't think it's her.
Is that contingent on it, on it meeting? Because my understanding, and this was from Town Council too, was that signs are not grandfathered in. So, is it contingent on this, this request, on a request meeting the bylaw?
Well, I pointed out that it was not, said that as long as the, the physical components of the sign aren't changing, if it's just the words and lettering, it was her opinion that she needed to do any new permits.
Okay.
Patrick, could you forward that email to me, please?
Could you? Follow me, start the meeting.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
But it wasn't an email, I called her five minutes ago.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, I mean, the applicant, we can, you know, carry on with the business, but Patrick, I'd be interested to, once we're done with the vote, I'd be interested to do sort of a follow-up question on that.
But I think, if I understood Patrick correctly, we don't need to vote.
Right, okay.
I think this is a done deal. And your next step is to...
Avi.
Avi is to go before the select board.
Okay, so how do I go about doing that? Do I, do I go to Mr. Risa in the town office?
We don't need to approve it from the selectmen down either, then.
Yeah, the select board doesn't either.
Maybe the select board doesn't either. I, I think, I think you're in the clear, and you can just go ahead.
You think, you think I'm in the clear, or you know I'm in the clear?
Good question.
It's a, you know, it's a fair question. I mean, based on what Patrick is quoting our Town Council as opining, that no application is necessary. If no application is necessary, then I don't think it's necessary for the Planning Board or the Select Board.
If it was on the agenda, do we need to vote on it?
We can...
Just to be on the safe side, it wouldn't hurt.
Just so she doesn't have to come back.
Yes.
Yeah.
We could approve it, and then, if she doesn't need it, that's great.
Yeah, no, no harm, no foul.
All right.
I'm making, I make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay. Any further comment or questions, issues?
Jennifer? I have one question, please.
Hang on, we're going to vote. We're going to vote.
Okay.
Unless your question relates to something material that we've already discussed.
I don't think it does. So, will there be a sign permit fee, given that you're voting on it?
No.
There shouldn't.
Shouldn't, is that right, Jennifer?
Yeah.
No.
No.
I told her, no.
The answer is no.
Kate should stop her screen sharing.
So, Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Gary?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Marie?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye. Hi.
Good luck, Avi, good luck, Heather.
Yeah.
And, oh, Carl, did you vote yes?
Is he here?
Yeah.
He's muted.
We didn't know. He seemed to be muted.
But he voted aye. He raised...
He said aye.
Right.
We can't hear you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck with the business.
Thank you.
Glad to have you in town.
Thank you so much. Bye, thank you, Heather.
Thank you. So, oh, Patrick walked away.
So, that was an interesting...
I learn something every day.
Yeah.
Can I just ask Patrick a question? Can you get something in writing from Town Council on, I didn't quite hear what you said, Patrick? So, did you say the Town Council said that if nothing about the size of the sign is changing, that, like, and the height is not changing, that we don't need to, we don't need to approve?
If the physical aspects of the sign, you know, like the materials, how it's displayed, its brackets, whatever, if that's not changing, if it's just literally the lettering, or a logo, or change of words on existing signage, she did not feel it needed to be approved.
So, what if, what if the sign, the existing sign, did not actually meet, in terms of size, did not actually meet our bylaw? Do we still not need to, can we, is she saying that there's grandfathering, essentially?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. Or...
No, because...
No, I don't think necessarily she's saying that. I think the assumption is that if it's in accordance with the bylaw, which it is, then we don't need, there, no permit is needed.
Okay, because previously, she had told, what I had heard was that there was no grandfathering, but, okay, I got it, okay.
And also, I think the word grandfathering has gone out of...
Right.
Out of current usage, for reasons we don't need to go into tonight. I forget what the new term is, but it's not grandmothering.
It's pre-existing non-conformity, and I stumble over it every single time.
That's more, grandfather is so much easier. Okay, so, before we get to the Cottage Era Estate, I sent around last week from Michael a invitation to attend a conservation webinar. It's online, it's remote, and a lot of information was included about various sessions over a number of days. Kate has indicated she wants to, to have access to the entire program, and Maria, I think you indicated an interest in...
I think I am not going to do that.
You think not?
I was going to do that Saturday one, but I think I am not.
Oh, okay.
Turns out I can.
I thought Kate was maybe going to do one of the sessions. Does anybody else want to pursue any of that webinar? Kate, if you do go ahead, I'm sure you'll take notes, and we'd love to have a brief summary of the key learnings from that seminar, once it's over.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. The last item is the discussion of the Cottage Era State bylaw. Last week, or last meeting, two weeks ago, as the minutes indicate, we went back and forth on this, not making any, any decisions. One of the thoughts that was raised, and it's mentioned in the minutes, was in, is there a rational basis for simply eliminating this bylaw? Because it's applicable to so few properties, and some people would say that our current zoning and subdivision bylaw are sufficient to, to deal with this, with the issues that would otherwise be raised in, in the Cottage Era State bylaw. Does anybody want to comment on that particular issue?
For the people that weren't there, I think what we talked about was that it really affects so few properties. That was what kind of the discussion centered around. It's really like two properties.
Well, no, we don't know...
That was what we kind of said, just for the guys that weren't here.
Actually, actually, I, my understa, my understanding of it is that we don't actually know which properties it applies to. And we looked at the definition, and to my read, it's, it's pretty open-ended.
Carl, I thought you were going to make a list for us.
My point was that that's part of the problem, is that we don't actually know which properties this applies to. We know it doesn't apply to, for example, self-made, because self-made is in the R1 district.
Carl, did you hear Wayne's question?
Yeah, I did. I, I have to say, you know, the Cottage Era Estate bylaw is, is, is a, is fundamentally an historic preservation action that predates our actual Stockbridge historic preservation bylaw. And, and, you know, it was, it's, it's, it's a valiant effort by a lot of people that I respect very much, like, you know, Bill Selke and so forth. But, you know, but I mean, it's, it's like, you know, I, I don't know that it's, it's, it's serving of, I mean, I think, I, I, I think the era has passed, and, and, I mean, I don't know that, you know, that, 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 that particular, you know, you know, menu option really needs to, needs to be, be, be there. I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm all in favor of, like, the idea that, like, you know, you know, of, of the cluster zoning and so forth, that we, you know, we, we do have separately in the bylaws, you know, some of the, some of the options for entertainment and, 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 you know, kind of hotel activities and so forth, I mean, you know, you know, may, may really be worth, you know, maintaining in some form, but, but I just don't know that, I mean, have we ever used it? I mean, has, 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 has that, this, this bylaw ever been, you know, invoked?
Last, last meeting, Carl, it was mentioned that it was used with, and to include the modifications that are in this one, for Elm Court.
Right, but Elm, Elm, where, where is Elm Court? I mean, nothing's happening.
But it could.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, somebody who has $12.5 million could buy it and redevelop it.
Question, Bill.
Yes, Wayne?
So, wasn't the bylaw developed so that somebody might take a big property like that and be, have a way by further development of the property to help pay for the restoration that we all want to happen on these big properties and buildings?
I think the answer is yes. I mean, in, in its very title, Cottage Era State Adaptive Reuse.
I wonder why that is, why don't you like that, Carl? I would think that would be, so I'll let you answer, I'm not going to put words in your mouth. I thought that was, was proposed and approved because it satisfied a way for these folks to do something with these large properties that they otherwise wouldn't.
Well, you're, you're, you're making, Wayne, you're making me think. So, you know, I, I don't, I'm, I'm certainly not opposed to that principle. It's just a question of, like, you know, is this, is this actually, is this actually working? Is, 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 is anything practical happening? And, you know, and like, like I say, I mean, like, you know, there's not been a hell of a lot, but I, I just, I don't know, I mean, I, I feel like, I feel like, you know, it's, 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 what worries me about it is, like, sort of, you know, you know, some kind of invitation for, for, for development that, that the town may not be actually interested in doing, but, you know. I'm, 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 I'm willing to have the conversation, yeah.
Okay. Patrick, you, sorry, Kate, can, Patrick had his hand up a few minutes ago.
I'm on the board here.
I know.
I was in front of Kate, so...
I'm sorry.
Um...
Go ahead, Kate.
So, I guess, you know, one, one thing I distinctly remember was that, I think at the last meeting, Gary referred to the changes that were made to the bylaw along the way to accommodate Elm Court. And I remember one town meeting, and I'm pretty sure this predates, predates when you were here in Stockbridgeville, but there was a change that meant that the bylaw then applied to, I think it was, the, they added in either the R2 or the R4, I can't remember which. And people really had no idea what they were voting on. So, people for whom it wasn't even in their interest to vote for it, didn't understand it.
How do you know that? They voted for it.
Excuse me? Because I talked to them, you know, and they told me afterwards, subsequently, they said, we didn't understand this. One person told me they actually got up and spoke in favor of it not understanding that it was not in their best interests.
Okay. Patrick?
Okay, a couple points. Let me just, wait, wait, let's see, oh, I'm not, hold on, sorry. Look, there's a couple points I want to make. One, this was always a grand bargain. You refurbish and renew and renovate the main house and protect the front lawn, the great... You refurbish and renew and renovate the main house and protect the front lawn, the great lawn. And in exchange for that, you get some options that are not otherwise available to you under standard subdivision and, and whatever underlying, underlying by right zoning that you would otherwise have in that area. Those options are never, are never removed. Cottage Era state is a special permit. People always can avail themselves of raise the place and subdivide it. They can do that by right. All right? My sense is, I talked to a number of folks who were, who put the bad past one forward, and their, their sense was that there's three things that you might want to consider. Now, I'm not advocating these. I think you got to talk about them, but this is a very.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, Patrick, I couldn't hear what you just said. You, you said.
I said, I talked to several of the folks who were involved in the drafting of the current bylaw, and there were some simple suggestions.
Excuse me? Can you just slow up where you speak so I can understand you?
I talked to several of the folks who drafted the current bylaw, and there were three simple suggestions.
With whom did you speak?
I'm not gonna say, but you guys can reach out to the folks that, you know, our predecessors on these boards. Okay? One, consider making it easier to, without increasing density, keep the buildings closer together to preserve more of the land for a conservation point of view. All right? Two, make, strengthen the affordable housing component of any potential plan, even if it is just reiterating our right or creating our right as the permitting board to do affordable housing as a component of this, or workforce housing, or some kind of housing that regular people can afford. And the third is whether you should consider, in the, in the context of those first two, making it something like 40 or 60 acres as the minimum size rather than 80 acres. The reason there's so few of these properties that we're able to protect with this bylaw currently is that the size of the parcel is so large as a requirement. Now, look, if you, if you throw this away, you're simply, you're certainly taking off the board a restaurant or a, or a hotel in the great house, but you're also increasing the likelihood that those buildings cannot be saved. And that I think is really the fundamental decision your board needs to make as you go forward.
Thank you.
Well, which buildings do you think need to be saved?
Which buildings? I mean, I think there's something like 93 cottage era properties in this town on various lot sizes. I'm not suggesting you apply this to, you know, something on two acres, but if it's on 50 acres, does that mean that it doesn't qualify for this and it gets raised? I really don't like the idea of raising these properties, personally.
Well, but how many, do you know how many there are?
Well, I've been told there's 93 total Cottage Era, things that qualify as Cottage Era, you know, mansions in the town. By the woman who wrote the book on this, that's her number.
No, I'm, 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 you know, I mean, I, I, I'm embarrassed to say how uninformed I am on this subject. And like, this is supposed to be my, 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 my bailiwick. But, well, I don't know, you know.
I mean, I would, you know, one, I'm sorry, Carl, you keep going.
No, no.
Well, you know, so clearly you've talked to Carol Owens about this. She wrote the book, we know that. And I, one comment I would make is make is that potentially that's a conflict of interest. This is what she does in part for a living. You know, she's written a book, she sells that book, and she talks about it.
Kate, can we be careful, like, from only banding about terms like conflict of interest? That is a legal claim. I can get advice from anybody in town or anybody out of town, and that doesn't, that doesn't create any conflict. Okay?
I'm not saying it's a conflict.
And I think we should be really, really cautious about weaponizing like these legal terms, you know, for the purpose of intimidation, if you will. Carol Owens is not under any conflict of interest of giving me advice as to how many cottage era estates are in this town. Thank you.
Okay, so Patrick, if I can speak, and, Bill, I think we need to call this meeting to order a bit.
Go ahead, Kate.
Yeah. You know, to me, I don't, when I say conflict for, I'm not saying conflict for you, I'm saying that clearly Carol is in the business of writing about the great estates. So I think it's to keep it in the context, keep it important to keep it in context, that that's something that she's interested in. And I guess, you know, I just think that probably what we need to understand as a planning board is how many properties we're dealing with and which properties we're dealing with. And I think not just as a planning board, but for residents as well, because people are investing a lot of money in this town, and they might want to know if they're going to be next to a big commercial interest.
Wayne.
And I know from experience, these things are very difficult to control. Once something is established, it's, it's sort of, it changes the dynamic, and those people who are nearby, you know, many residents may not want to have to deal, they may not want to have the onus of enforcement, you know, of what's going on in their neighborhood as part of, you know, as part of regular life.
Wayne.
I would say that I don't want to feel like I can't talk to anybody about these matters. These matters I need to inform myself about, and if that means that I need to talk to somebody that is in favor of a project or that's against the project, I feel very comfortable talking to anybody that wants to chat with me about that, and I don't think it's a conflict. I want to inform myself about both sides. I'm not trying to shut the door on either one. And I think that this bylaw that we have on the books has many protections in it for the town. A special permit has control over so many aspects of what this would include, including a conversation, which was the crux of the matter in the first place, that the applicant did not get the chance to talk to the select board about the proposed project. That's what had everybody so up in arms, and that's what started the whole conversation after we unanimously disapproved of his proposal to change the actual bylaw. All he's asking for in his response letter to what we did that night is to have a conversation with the select board and start the explanation of what he has in mind. The, the language, to your point, Patrick, about affordable housing and considering, well, mostly towards the affordable housing component, you know, that's part of what you talk about in a negotiation. That's why the initial conversation is so important. That's why you need to understand exactly what it is that he's asking for and what he may be willing to work with the town on as far as affordable housing. You gotta have the conversation. I, I think there's a lot of protections. There may be some tweaks in, in what we have to do or look at, but mostly I think this all started because we weren't allowed the opportunity to know all about it.
Yeah. And to Roxanne's credit, she has reached out to Patrick Sheehan and more than once within the last, I don't know, six months, more recently than that, and invited him to come before the select board in an informal, non, you know, approval kind of situation where they can just talk with each other about what his plans are, what, how they may have changed since they were first shown around, and how the select board kind of generally feels about it. I think it's a really healthy thing to do.
It's the first step.
And it never happened the last time, and it should happen this go around. So I applaud Roxanne for staying on, on top of it.
And I would say one other thing. Every, every version of seemingly bylaws that come before us or things that we've been after on the NRPC, the whole deal, the first step in any of these proposals that almost unanimously they recommend an informal conversation to start the process. And that's all he's asking for, as far as I can determine from his response.
So Patrick, have you, have you, you know, what's, what's the status of communicating him with the select board? You're on mute.
I talked to the man a year and a half ago. He has kids going off to college, he's busy. He had, he had frankly, you know, from his perspective, I'm not, I'm not carrying water for him or advocating for this, his perspective, he had a bad, bad, in his mind, a bad experience here. I'm not sure if the man will ever come back to the table. And I think it's incumbent on the planning board to make zoning that works for the entire town and not focus on spot zoning. The reason he hasn't responded to, you know, Roxanne, for example, I'm assuming, I haven't talked to her, is he may just not be interested right now in pursuing a project here. That's entirely up to the applicant, but I think it's a little weird to debate what he wants to do. He, he knows it's a different board. If he wanted to come talk to us, when he's ready to do that, he'll do it. I'm sure of it. The man is quite a sophisticated businessman, you know?
Well, why don't you invite him to come to the, come before the board, Bill?
Since Roxanne's already talking to him, I think that's sufficient. I don't, I don't want to muddy the waters. I think she, if, if anybody can convince him to come with an, you know, without fearing that he's gonna get shot at sunrise, which happened the last time, it's Roxanne. So I leave it in her good hands. She's in, I haven't talked to him in a year. The last time I did talk to him, in March of last year, I invited him to come before the town, the planning board and the select board, or even to send his lawyer, he was reluctant. And I never heard back from him, but Roxanne has developed a dialogue, and I'd leave it in her capable hands. Patrick, you're on mute.
I just wanted caution everyone that we got a good lesson this week on the concept of agent and agency. And it honestly, these folks who are gonna come before us as a special permit authorities, okay? That makes us kind of the juries, the negotiators, the folks who have to evaluate what these things are. We have to be very careful not to cross between the fact that everyone gets a fair shake and advocacy for a project, because that well may go be outside the lines. You know, I've had many smaller property advocates, you know, I mean, folks who apply first permits, come to me and say, what do you think about buying this property? Or, you know, what do you, do you think this would pass? And the answer always has to be, I really can't comment on it, because unless, until that, that proposal is made by the owner to the special permitting authority, we're really not in a position to comment or, or advocate, or certainly not coach. If, you know, we, we gotta be careful that it doesn't just end up in endless litigation. There's really sensitive rules around this.
My understanding, Patrick, is that Roxanne has not advocated for the project. She's just, she has invited the man in, in a property that is obviously critical in this town.
I'm not suggesting she has. She's way too smart to do that. I'm just saying that all the things are, we just reminded that, like, you know, there's no proposal or discussion before our boards. And I don't know why we're talking about specific properties under those, under that reality, you know?
We're talking about it because it's come up before and because it's, you know, subject number one when it comes to the Cottage Era state bylaw.
Well, we, we agreed to talk about it.
Yeah, and to put our heads in the sand and not, not mention a live, formerly live proposal is, to me, kind of pointless. And I don't think there's any problem, and I will talk with Donna and get her opinion on this, of the planning board, the select board having an informal conversation in public, not in private, in public, on Zoom, with people in the seats and on Zoom, about the project and the owner's plans for the project, or the owner's thoughts about how he might change the project, or, and what the select board thinks that, that the biggest issues about the project are, without committing to any particular decision during that session. To me, that's, that's just sensible, trying to make progress on, on a, on an obviously important situation in town, in the public, not in private.
I, I also think it's really important to reach out to abudders. I mean, after all, they're impacted by what happens, and as a consideration and courtesy, I mean, we represent them, and I think that's, that's an important, very important gesture to make.
I agree. But, you know, one of the problems last time was that Don Chavon went up there by himself.
We don't know that, Bill.
He's told me that. He's told me that.
Here's the thing, Bill. Every time a specific parcel comes up, in the context of you guys changing the zoning, you create an environment where that, 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 even if town meeting passes, it has to go to the AG, and you're going to get a claim of spot zoning. My strong recommendation to you is that you stop linking what you believe should be zoning changes to what could be argued to the attorney general as an, as an exercise in spot zoning. Look at the record of the last year and a half and, and count up the number of times a specific parcel has come up. How about we just stick to what's best for the town and always act in the interest of the town and not think about specific, but look, I'm not a lawyer, but I've been given this advice. So, you know, you take it or you don't take it, you know, but.
You know, I.
Well, that's exactly what I think we are doing. We are considering what's best for the town, but you have to understand what something consists of before you can make a determination if it's good or bad. So I understand you're saying you have to be careful. I do. You can't, you know, that's what our job is here in public, is to debate actual pieces of the project or the project as a whole. We need to have that in a formal setting, but to, to have somebody come explain more of what he has in mind or what any applicant has in mind, I think is just common sense, and it allows you to make a, a good decision.
I mean, if, just to use a simple example, if the people who had come for the sign permit tonight had come before this without the application, just asked to be on the agenda for information, and asked us some questions, would we have said, no, you've got to sign, you've got to submit a application? We're not gonna say a word to you? We're, we're not gonna give you any guidance? We're not gonna point you to any particular part of the zoning bylaws? You're on your own. You're on your own.
First thing we should say is, how can we help you?
Yeah, exactly.
Out of putting a hand.
I, I take your point, Patrick, about, and I will talk to Donna about, directly I will, about whether pointing at 37 Interlake and, as we sometimes do, often do, in a, in a discussion at this stage, is amounts to spot zoning. I, I will, I will talk to her.
And wouldn't.
Could you also, when, can you send her response? Can you get her response in email and send it around to the board so, so we, you know, really see what she writes in writing and it's clear?
Sure.
But also, a project has come under this bylaw and been approved, and, and now we're talking about another project, so it's, it's already been used. Now, granted, there's not a lot of them, but it's been applied for and granted and hasn't been challenged, as I'm aware, for that particular reason. So I would thought it would have been challenged on that if there was a problem there.
You're talking about Elm Court?
Yes.
It's bylaw changes that would be challenged as being spot zoning, is my understanding.
And apparently there were no challenges to the Elm Court changes.
Well, people, that was the point I was trying to make earlier, that people didn't understand them. You know, some of these things, you know, are difficult to.
You could say that about any bylaw that's coming up, that people don't understand what they're voting for.
Well, they should understand. Well, they should understand.
Obviously, they should understand, but, you know, there's so many voters, and that's why people don't go to town meeting, because they don't, they don't know what they're voting for. So why bother going?
Well, I think.
But you have, you have, you have just as many voters in town, each have an opinion.
I think we need to do.
There's going to be 800 different opinions. You can't just, well, I talked with three people and they didn't like it. They didn't know what they were voting for. So you can't say, well, I talked to people. You want to know what, who Patrick talked to? Who did you talk to that didn't understand what the meeting, what they were voting for?
I think it's important to, you know.
No, I want to know who you talked to that said that they didn't understand after they voted for it. You're trying to put Patrick on the line. Now, you should be able to stand there because you're telling him. He should say who he didn't, who didn't understand what they were voting for.
I talked to, to abutters of, of. The greatest state properties, and they said we had, we didn't understand it.
Of which greatest state properties? Just Elm Court is the only one that's been approved.
Both Elm Court and DeSisto. This applies to DeSisto too. So, but, you know, I think we should get this back into the realm of, um, slightly more civil discourse. But, I mean, you know, to your point, Nancy, about people not understanding, I think, you know, we do need to do a better job of communicating some of these very impactful bylaw changes so people do know what they're voting on when they come to town meeting.
Everyone's invited to our meetings. Look how many people show up. So the, the invitation is there. And, and if they don't choose to inform themselves, then, you know, shame on them. But as we sit here and try to debate what's right or good about something or bad, you know, it's not that the conversation isn't happening, it's whether they choose to participate or not. And you can only do so much to get them here.
I don't, I don't, I think that, you know, people are just, they're busy and, um, they're extraordinarily busy and the town has changed and, um, you know.
I don't know what else you do. You, you offer the invitation. I don't know what else you can do with that.
Well, I think it's, you know, when it, we have town meeting once a year for the most part. And I think, you know, it's, I think there is more, but I'll, I'll leave it there. I think I've, I've covered it.
You know, you can zoom every meeting in this town. Selectment, conservation, planning, you can zoom. You can keep yourself informed if you want to. But people still don't understand it. If they're not, if you're not involved in town government, it's very hard to understand the things that go on. I, I think that's, I think a lot of people think they know what's happening and really don't. And I don't know how to deal with that. But there certainly is opportunity to hear the meetings and participate.
No, I agree, there's certainly opportunity. There's, there's no doubt about that. But I think, you know, some of these, these bylaws are, are very complicated. And if you're not, you know, if you're not, if you're not, I mean, if you're not immersed in it, and even when you are immersed in it, um, it can be, you know, it can be challenging to understand, you know, how will this play out? You know, and in some cases, it ends up not really mattering, but in others, it really does. And I think it, it can just be sort of a difficult course to, to navigate from the standpoint of understanding.
So bringing us back to the bylaw, um, one of the questions was, do we drop the bylaw? And, um, I think the point has been made that if we, and I will make it if it hasn't been made, if we drop this bylaw, we're leaving developers to rely on the subdivision bylaw, which allows for, um, by right, development in a subdivision. There's no special permit involved. The, uh, the kind of threshold, um, value of the cottage era state bylaw is that a special permit is required. With all that that entails in terms of the information we, we rightly ask for and need in order to make a decision, the input from abutters, uh, the input from other town cotties, and that alone, it seems to me, is, uh, a reason, in addition to the fact that these are, we're talking about big properties, um, not one acre housing plots, is a reason to keep. I'm not saying it's perfect. I do think it has things we could at a subsequent meeting, um, uh, discuss. But, um, I think it's, it's, it's important that we, uh, we keep it and that we amend it if necessary to improve it. Marie. Hang on, Kate, Marie.
This is when we were working on the NHRPZ was something different than just a subdivision. And this has, you know, a bit of the same element, like the talking ahead of time and planning and, and all of that. I mean, that's, that's where we got off on let's do a, you know, Joel and Jeff, was because all we have is either this or a subdivision. And, and that was sort of a different way to do just a subdivision. And then we're kind of going to fit this in with it. But, you know, that, I think that's, so now we're, now we have this that we can tweak or not or keep, or a subdivision.
So are we, so Bill, I thought that we were talking about subdivision, subdivision bylaw, so I had prepared to, to have that discussion tonight. Are we not talking about the subdivision bylaw tonight?
Uh, no.
We're not?
No. We could do it next time, if you, if you'd like. I think it, it's probably relevant to compare and contrast advantages and disadvantages between this and between the subdivision bylaw, which, as Patrick pointed out, or somebody has repeatedly pointed out, is development by right versus, um, this and other, parts of the bylaws which require a special permit.
I, I really think we should look at the subdivision bylaw because it's not exactly development by right. There's, there's a lot more there. And, um, there's also the cluster bylaw. So I think for our next meeting, it would be, um, I would certainly vote to, to put that clearly on the agenda as discussion of the subdivision bylaw and the cluster bylaw that we have existing on our, on our, in our zoning bylaw.
Are we still going to talk about cottage era tonight?
I don't think so. I don't think there's much value in it.
Okay.
Okay, Kate. Anybody want to talk about this anymore?
Well, are, we have that on the agenda for, are we going to try to compare and contrast? Is that the idea? What's our goal?
I think that's the idea. That, that would be my suggestion. We, as, we look at, as Kate suggested, the cluster and subdivision bylaws and look at how, um, they conform or differ from the cottage era state bylaw. And, you know, are there aspects of both or either, one of, any of them that, uh, you know, give rise to things we might want to change?
Is that your thought, Kate? Why you want to open that?
Um, I mean, that sounds fine to me, but I really, I was, I was thinking that, um, we've never, no one on this board except for Gary has ever worked with a subdivision bylaw. And I think it's really, really important for us to understand and be familiar with what's there as a taking off point. I mean, that's what we have on our books currently, and I'm not sure that, that anybody is really all that familiar with it.
I would just hope that we had a specific idea in mind instead of saying, okay, we're going to look at this bylaw. Uh, that brings us everywhere. I would hope that we could really focus on something.
Let, let him finish.
And it just, so we have a goal in mind and a pretty specific goal. Because we wander down these ideas and we, we, we go off a bit. We have a tendency to go off a bit. And I just want to make sure there's a, a solid idea that we're looking to explore before we do it.
Okay, so, so how about this? We look at the subdivision and the cluster bylaws and with the idea of talking about what we think is, is good and what we think is not so good, and compare it to the cottage era state bylaw.
Yeah, that's sort of what I suggested. Um, by the way, I think there's still time, uh, it being mid-February, for us to present something to town meeting on this subject. An amended, if necess, you know, whatever we decide, whether we're going to amend the cottage era state bylaw, drop it, um, change, uh, in light of a, a review of the cluster and subdivision bylaws, change this bylaw or change them. There is time for us, if we work at it and agree on a, on a strategy, to get something before town meeting this year.
If we need to do anything at all.
If we need, yeah, we may decide, leave it alone. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Don't all speak at once. And was that a second?
Carol second.
Aye, we're all in favor. Thank you, everybody.